Well, I think, uh, because, sorry.
I can't think of most of them. That's the way I understand it.
All participation of Allison. I think it's this, the majority of.
Well, I guess it's that lower cover.
Away, it should be fairly good way.
Well, actually, uh.
Uh, if we can, we'd like to make sure.
Okay, oh, yeah, I have it too.
Yeah.
That's right. Sorry, um, okay.
Sure.
She's only going to work.
Also, this line in, would you?
We talked about. I don't know what it had to be.
No, there's no appeal, it's typically just some like. That are associated with it.
You'll have to get your.
Okay. Sorry.
Just curious.
What's left? What's left? Go to the top, go to the top, waiting here this season.
If it's, no. Let me know what it's up to.
We almost went all the way.
Yeah, I'm talking.
It's here, and we just looked at that, that our island prize, so.
If we did raise this one time.
Yes, and if we spent more than three innings in Sanford during that series, we wouldn't. We haven't did it right.
You say we're doing it right?
Yeah, yeah.
Joe was saying.
Yeah, we had, um, we had a rock, we were raining, and, and the minute it started raining, I started sliding around the field, and they started scoring runs, and they had to pick up the second half, they didn't know what I was doing. Two days later, it was heavy, and then, uh, we lost that second game, and then the third game, we were seven to six in the bottom of the ninth with one out, and. So, we got, stuff happens, but, uh.
Went in order?
It did, went into the tenth inning, and the bottom of the tenth was when, uh, we scored the winning run. And, uh, no, the fighting, uh, it was still a great season, and, uh, the team needed money, money more than we've ever made before, so, there's a bunch of projects, like, doing concessions.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, and I'm, I have to use myself that.
I'll probably get some others.
I, I want more. But, uh, that's gonna be a thing.
Yes, you go.
Come on, please.
Feel free to call my.
Only good things happen.
I don't know if you're just. You can text them.
Alex?
Yeah, why don't you try to call my guy?
All right, you are.
All right, good evening. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Welcome to Sanford Planning Board Meeting of August 21st, 2024. Meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session or the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you're unable to hear or see something. Please note that any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony is concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at its sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at its sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for the, for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment, however, remember the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision site plan, shoreline, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact, since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights, and also, as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing at the city's website and the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding, you have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay. So, moving on to new business for public, uh, public hearing file number R-18A-16199 Airport Road. Jamie, could you orient us on this, please?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Uh, this project is to construct, uh, eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-ish square foot aircraft hangar, um, do some taxiway improvements, expansions, and stormwater treatment and other side improvements down at the airport, um, very near where the city of Sanford's, um, maintenance facility is, and airport office, airport manager's office. This came out of site plan, uh, a month or so ago, ish, um, with, uh, a lengthy list of stuff that Kendra was working on. I believe she worked through some of it, um, I'm not sure we worked through all of it yet, um, probably give her a chance to, to, um, during the public hearing to, to talk, just to see where we are at, um, I, I think we still have some issues that are being resolved.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Kendra Ramsell, Sebago Technics, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, so I'll just do a short, short presentation, summary of the project, um, and then answer any questions you all may have, um, or any questions from the public. Uh, so, as Jamie mentioned, we're proposing an eleven thousand five hundred square foot hangar. This is to the southeast of the, the maintenance building that Jamie also mentioned, um, and directly to the east of Presidential Lane Extension, which you all may be aware of, I think was permitted last year. Um, so, a big part of this project, um, is addressing stormwater. The airport has a, a existing SLOTA permit, um, which, of course, every time changes are made to the development at the airport, that has to be either amended or, um, condition compliance has to be met. So, this, this project is in an area with a defined redevelopment, um, with, how do I state that? Defined redevelopment criteria, I should say. So, the last amendment that occurred to the SLOTA defined three different redevelopment areas, we're in one of those. Um, so as part of this project, we have a certain amount of impervious that we're allowed, and an amount of landscaping that we're allowed, we're under those thresholds, um, and therefore we can just file a condition of compliance through DEP to get the project permitted. There is no treatment associated with this project, because again, we're in that redevelopment area, and other portions of the airport are being treated, or being over treated in order to make up for our development. Other utilities, uh, that we can discuss are, um, public water, public sewer, the gas main is being extended to serve the building, um, and then, of course, power, uh, to serve this building will be extended as well. All of those public utilities are readily available and very close to, uh, the proposed building. We do have some wetland impacts that we're proposing, uh, there are two isolated wetlands to the south of the proposed building, um, and those are just a result of grading. The wetlands are not high-value wetlands, they're in the center of a very developed airport, um, but we will be filing a permit through the DEP, uh, for those. And I had a conversation with Matt just tonight, we need to figure out if that's gonna be under a PBR or, um, under a current permit that exists that needs to be amended for those wetland impacts, but they're very minimal. So, where we're at with, with permitting and answering require, uh, required questions, um, we did submit an overall, uh, plan of the airport, just to give you a little bit more context as to where we are in relation to everything else going on and other projects that are happening. We did permit last year, um, Hangar E, which is to the northwest of this area, um, and then there's another project going on that has not come before you, but I think, um, they've submitted to DEP, it's an aviation school, um, that's in the project vicinity, and the, the limit of our development kind of abuts there, so we had to make sure that we were in coordination with their design. And the only thing that we really had to focus on there was just making sure our, our taxiway alignment was going to line up with where, where they're realigning theirs. Uh, so, that'll be, I think, a lot clearer once you have those plans and that project in front of you, however, Sebago is not handling, uh, that permitting, it's a different, uh, engineering firm and client, it's Jim Knowles. Um, we did submit a truck turn simulation, um, with the comment response letter this week. Um, I don't anticipate any issues with fire, um, but I can, I know Jamie was on site earlier yesterday.
Alex was.
Oh, Alex was, okay, and, um, if any issues arose, we're happy to address them. Um, and last but not least, we do have stormwater, um, things that were mentioned by Matt, which we've worked through, but we do need to provide the revised stormwater report, just so it's all formalized, um, but we, we are under the threshold that's required, and we should be all set with treatment, especially once we get our condition compliance through DEP, which we'll forward a copy of, um, to the planning office. I think I touched on almost everything, the, the last item I'll add is that, um, Allison did supply a memo, I think there was some concern that what's being proposed as part of this project and future development that's planned is not exactly what is shown on the airport master plan. I think that's, it's been described to me by Allison as an iterative process, um, and very highly conceptual, there's no way to know exactly where each hangar is going to end up when, when different, um, owners come in and want to develop these areas. So, um, the plan is for this project, Hangar E and the aviation school to be incorporated into the next update to the master plan, which is also regulated by FAA. So, we're hoping to clean it all up at that point, and that would be handled by the airport and Allison herself. That's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, um, we'll go through the public hearing process, and then I'm sure we'll come back and ask questions.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there any other staff comments before we open the public hearing?
I believe Allison Navia, Airport Manager, would like to speak.
Good evening, everyone, uh, thank you for being able to accommodate on Zoom, this is really nice to, to be able to do this. Um, so, what, the only comment that I had that came to light today had to do with the limits of pavement on the more westerly entrance, entrance to the SRE Building, the Airport Maintenance and Administration Building. That, uh, after I talked with Kendra and met on site with Alex, looks like it can be fixed, but it will be different than what's shown on the plan. So, they needed to get rid of a little bit of pavement to make up for some of the new impervious, and we're gonna have to shift exactly where that pavement is put down and where some of it, uh, is still remaining. So, we don't want to have any impact to any of the pavement that leads to our building for that driveway. Um, we should be able to minimize some of the pavement, uh, elsewhere on the project, and then later on, if subsequent buildings are constructed, then what we can do is address that in the permitting, that new impervious, an additional impervious during the next phase of the pros, project, and it wouldn't affect the functionality of, of this phase. So, that was my only comment, that was my only, um, concern that came to light today, but it looks like it's a, a pretty easy solution, it's less than two thousand square feet that we're talking about.
I just wanted to add, the area that Allison's talking about is right here, this is our demo plan, um, can you, you can all see that? It's okay, um, so, right here, um, in this area, we were just taking out some pavement, as she said, in order to make up for proposed impervious area in the redeveloped area that we talked about, um, and so, we'll work with Allison to limit the amount of proposed, uh, impervious in order to get that net zero balance that we were looking for, it's just that this area does, is not convenient for the airport to not have more pavement in. That's all.
All right, thank you.
That's all that I had.
All right, thanks. Any other, any other comments from staff? No? All right, declare the public hearing open, uh, ask that anybody that wants to speak in favor of this project? All right, anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this project, either in the room or on Zoom? Anyone who would like to ask a general question or make a comment? Okay, declare the public hearing closed for now, because it sounds like we're probably gonna be tabling this, but we can have some discussion and hopefully, uh, pass along any additional information. All right, uh, bring it up the planning board to, is there anything? That you guys, uh, have questions on?
Well, I mean, how many, 'cause I know we don't want to pass things with tons of conditions. The permit ones don't bother me too much, because those are normal, you know, usually someone doesn't have the permit prior to coming to us.
So, yeah, I think the problem here is that we're changing the layout of pavement and impervious service.
And then leaving it up to staff to.
And leaving it up to staff to, which is what we've.
Yeah.
Made big headway into not doing anymore. Are we correct in, in that this was the only concern, this was the concern that we, uh, were trying to alleviate?
So, out of the conditions that came out of site plan, um, we did get a letter from Airport Manager Allison Navia about it deviating from the ultimate layout plan, KKW Water District, there was some communication that was submitted, however, they did request that they could review the plan, so I think maybe just a quick follow-up with them.
We sent them the plans, but we haven't heard back from them yet.
Heard back, okay, so that's a little bit outstanding, um, we got an overall site plan, which was very helpful in understanding, um, other projects that have been previously or in the process of being approved. The stormwater plan will flex with the change in pavement or just needs to be approved after that plan has been cemented, and that would be also the next item, which would verify Airport Maintenance Facility has adequate vehicular and emergency access, so that is in flux, and then they have added the Knox Box location to the plan, so it is really just, um.
All items related around the pavement redo.
And then the Water Districts, getting back their, their comments.
Right, they, they've acknowledged that it's the, a reasonable use, and they just wanted to have a chance to look at the plan set.
Okay. Any last, uh, comments by the board? All right, I guess I would, I would move to table this for tonight. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor in tabling? Because they don't have it ready. They're not ready.
I, I'll, I'll just add, it's one thousand square feet of pavement that we have to make up for, and I did speak with Allison today, as she mentioned, there are a lot of areas where we can slim up the area and, slim up the pavement and still meet FAA standards, so, of course, it would be our preference to be able to just work with Matt and make sure that he's happy with our stormwater changes, as well as getting you the response from Kennybunk, Kennybunk Port and Wells Water District, um, with those being the only two items. We, we would just hope that we could work with Matt to do that rather than tabling and coming back, but, of course, that's our preference.
Matt, what are your feelings on that?
Yeah, sure, um, so, as far as the stormwater analysis goes, obviously that impervious area will need to be accounted for, but I'm not too concerned about it as far as it being a small area. The biggest, uh, I guess, item is, is maybe just the coordination between, um, me and Allison, I guess, just to make sure that, uh, the changes that are made based on what we're looking at tonight versus what Allison needs to see for FAA compliance, I understand it, um, make sure that coordinates with what I am evaluating based on, uh, impervious area. So, I feel comfortable making that coordination with Allison, just to make sure, you know, if, if she makes a change and it, it doesn't get reflected on what I'm looking at or vice versa, you know, just to avoid that, but, I know that's the purpose of avoiding, of, of not passing something with, with multiple conditions, just because of that coordination effort, but with it just being me and Allison, I think we could.
Allison, do you have anything to add on that?
I would be confident that between Matt and I, we can handle it, uh, just due to the size of it and just looking at it, at it quickly, we can, we can shave off a little chunk and we'll be fine. So, I'm comfortable with it if the board would approve it.
All right, thank you, I'll rescind my tabling motion, and, uh, I'll just open it up one more time for any other comments about board questions, anything else that, I mean, it sounds like we're, everything else is pretty well taken care of, we're very good. All right, so let's move on to findings of fact.
Great, thank you. Uh, okay, so we have some single findings of fact, 280-16-7A utilization of the site, this condition has been met, the standard has been met, sorry, because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7N solid waste disposal, the standard is met because the solid waste is proposed to be collected on site and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7Q technical and financial capacity, the standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7P shoreline relationship, the standard is not applicable, the applicant is not proposing any development, the standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Group one, 280-16-7B access to the site, 280-16-7C access into the site, 280-16-7D internal vehicular circulation, and 280-16-7E pedestrian circulation, these standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Five zero.
Group two, 280-16-7F stormwater management, 280-16-7G erosion control, 280-16-7H water supply, 280-16-7I sewage disposal, 280-16-7J utilities, 280-16-7K natural features, 280-16-7L groundwater protection, 280-16-7M exterior lighting, 280-16-7O landscaping, 280-16-7R buffering, and 280-16-7S airport encroachment. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
That is all the findings of fact, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a draft motion?
We do. The planning board accept the information in the August 6, 2024 summer report, grant the requested waivers, and find that major site plan application, R-18A-16, to construct an eleven thousand five hundred and fifty square foot aircraft hangar, expand the airport's taxiways, and to install stormwater treatment and other side improvements, has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions: By September 21st, 2024, unless other arrangements are made with the planning department, provide three copies of revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, submit letter from Kennybunk, Kennybunk Port Wells Water District, approve on the use within the Branch Brook watershed. B, submit stormwater plan that shows previously approved development area and confirm compliance with the previously approved design. Please confirm the conditions of approval associated with the main DEP SLOTA permit have been met, including condition eight. C, verify area around the Airport Maintenance Facility has adequate vehicular and emergency access with removal of some of the existing pavement. And then two, standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number six, inspection fiasco, number seven, pre-construction meeting, and number nine, alteration of plans. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Can I just jump, jump in real quick?
Oh.
So, included in the most recent submittal was a, um, construction estimate, um, that's the performance guarantee is gonna be based upon, um, that is under your guys' jurisdiction as far as approval, um, what I'll say about it is, it's, uh, it's consistent with, with, uh, construction sites of this size and nature, um, there is a few things that aren't included in this, including, you know, landscaping, well, there's not much landscaping on this site plan, but, uh, you know, loam and seed, any disturbed areas, um, it's not included in the, uh, itemized estimate, but at the same time, the, the, as I said, the cost is kind of consistent with sight of this size, so, it looks good to me, I guess.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
We can make those updates with the revised material that we're submitting, if Matt wants to see those items.
But, the, the, yeah, the important part is the, the, the cost wouldn't change, that's what, uh, that's what you're approving tonight, basically, the cost for the.
What is the cost?
Uh, one, a hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred.
All right, thank you. All right, we still have a motion, any more discussion? All in favor? Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you guys allowing us to work with staff moving forward, so, have a good night.
Thanks you too. All right, moving on to planning director's report.
Uh, we did not have time to prepare any more discussion for the gravel, oh, for the gravel, for the, um, campground ordinance, um, so we did not put, uh, anything on the agenda for tonight. We did, uh, put in the paper a public hearing notice to have the, um, public hearing, at least the first public hearing, next planning board meeting, um, by then, Aaron's hopeful to have some. some aspects of the ordinance drafted for potential review after at this time. But that has been scheduled for next planning board meeting. As I say continuously, we are continuing to have lots of pre-apps and getting stuff in, so I think we're well on the, on path to have another good year for projects coming through. Aaron's well along her way with the comprehensive plan, update process. We're getting another presentation from the consultant hired to do some economic studies for us at this month's steering committee meeting. So that, that process is still moving forward. I slipped and said gravel pit, so I'll have to say that, that one, we still need to work on. It's, unfortunately, hasn't got a lot of time in recent months, but it's something we haven't forgot about and, and will continue to try to get it squeezed out.
All right, thank you. Any communications from the Board? Or staff? Is that good? I guess I would just apologize for a little bit of snafu tonight. We kind of, but we made it through it, so.
I don't think it was a snafu. I mean, we've, as a, as a group, we've tried to not approve plans that, that weren't written yet. This is a slight example of a plan that technically wasn't drawn yet that got approved, but it's all very minor, small areas. So I don't think we strayed too far from our, our thought process. As she said, it's only a couple thousand square feet. She's already, she was talking with Allison already, trying to find areas to squeeze it out of. So it's, it's not like the entire plan's going to change. There, there will be minor modifications, but it's not like she's rewriting the whole design like in the years past might have still been approved with the condition.
And the site plan's been very cognizant of stuff like that, not passing it on to the planning board.
Right, or scheduling it out so that the applicant has enough time to update plans before the planning board. So we've had some projects that weren't necessarily tabled, but have requested not to be at the next planning board meeting so that they have time. And I think that's fine, too.
And just to add to that, from where I've seen it get messy is when there's multiple things that can kind of trickle down. Like if they change the pavement here, that, that affects the drainage, that affects, I don't know, buffering that you guys might be interested in, stuff like that, where there's multiple different levels with, with certain changes. But in this case, it was really, like I said, just me and Allison, so pretty straightforward. Whatever, whatever changes, I think we can handle it, and it wouldn't affect anything that other people are interested in.
All right, I appreciate that. All right, anything else on the Board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Five zero. Thanks, everyone.